Go ahead and start. Call order, the three of Good You EDA meeting. First thing we need to do is approve the minutes from the June 23rd, 2021 meeting. Do I have a motion?
I have a motion.
I have a second.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion or anything? Not all in favor? Aye, both. Minutes are approved. Other business.
One thing we have, oh, everything. I talked to a realtor, he's supposed to getting the thing signed for that 20 home lot. So that's still on, actually passive. Restrictions, everything, they agree with that. So we still have that one lot solo and that and all the else that's going on up there at this time, but they are moving ahead with that.
Cool. And then Mitch is here with Seda. And have a presentation for us?
I am, yes. So just a couple of follow up things. I did meet with Trayvon about the Better Environment Memorial. I know we, he had originally wanted to do it after Depot, but now with that being in the process of being sold to a private party. We're looking at other options for him. One was Cranston Heights Park. We are a little worried about how that's going to work with being ADA compliant there. It's very thilly over there. The other option, I believe we had talked about that spot that's actually just behind Trayvon's house that the city owns.
Yep.
So I did propose that to him as well. He wasn't as enthused with that. But it's an option to take a look at, to see if it'll work. Just with it not being, obviously people not working out. So we'll see how that goes along. Honestly, I think that's going to be a project that's going to take at least a year. I think by next fall, if it gets done, that's probably about the time it's going to get done by. And I did meet with Penny Ryan from Babtech. One thing that came out of that is he's been having a lot of struggles with hiring new employees. So one thought I had was doing maybe a career fair. And trying to partner with the school. Try to get something done like that so that we can actually target juniors and sophomores and get them interested in manufacturing. One thing I've noticed is that I think, I don't think a lot of, especially young kids, understand that manufacturing isn't this dirty grimy thing anymore. It's all computerized. I mean, you're working computers all day long. So before I, before I go and I take on that project, is that something that you would like to pursue?
Sounds logical to me, I guess.
I think anytime that you can partner with the schools, that's a good thing because it gives kids more options and it gives the workplace environment. So I think that's, that's a good route.
Okay, sounds good. Yeah, I was trying to start working on that. I don't know, we'll be able to pull together that fall or maybe in the spring to try to get some together. Maybe over the winter, I'll get ahold of the school and see kind of what a timeline for that would be like and see what we can do there. And then speaking of Depot too, I will continue working with private parties to anything that she needs. Keep moving that project forward and bring her plans to reality there.
So I met, Carrie and I, Carrie asked me to draft up the purchase agreement. They have signed the purchase agreement. And he signed, Carrie signed it yesterday, I think, and they signed yesterday. I'm anticipating they're going to probably pay us mid-week, so that will be transferred to them. So that'll be, so he can still work with them on other issues, but that'll be there properly probably by midweek or so. I'm sorry, but you wear that.
Okay.
Perfect. And the American Rescue Plan, so if you want to follow through guys on that. The Southeast Minnesota Leaning Municipalities is having an event tomorrow night. I do plan on attending and I was wondering if there was any questions that you had about the American Rescue Plan or the DED's new H3 revitalization. And how, if any way the city has considered spending that money or if you have questions of how it can be spent and how the projects can be spent. Since I'm there, I can certainly ask questions for you if you have any.
Do they have any guidelines now? I mean, you know, a list where you can spend it on, on this.
They have an interim final rule, so they haven't actually finalized the final rule. It's just kind of recommended uses. You can do some programs for businesses, grants, things like that. You could use it for infrastructure projects, parks, but some of that is falls under what's called a QCT. It qualifies. What's it called now? I remember it now somewhere. Oh, didn't actually write it up. But yeah, so it's basically more low income areas. For like parks and things like that. They want to target specific neighborhoods. When I was looking up the QCT, Good You doesn't really follow those. So some of those things that it can be spent on, we wouldn't be able to do here so that we don't fall into those low income guidelines. So it's kind of frustrating there. But like I said, didn't you, any of you have questions that you would like to be asked yet?
So I was just at the Ramroda Area Ambulance Association meeting last night. And they were mentioning this and were saying, you know, if there were funds available to help them again with expenses. And so that'd be something, we're part of, the city is, several cities are, several townships are part of that. We pay it per capita to be a part of that. With the last grant, what was actually the one before this?
Uh, the CARES Act.
Yeah, we did donate that for them. And so might be, I mean, that'd be a good time to ask about that too as far as, yeah.
And when I was reading through the interim final rule, they did say that like police, ambulance services, things like that, you can use the money for that. But it still has to be directly related to COVID-19. So for, if you're reimbursing hourly wages, you can do that as long as those hourly wages were related to COVID somehow. So was the COVID call, was the patient or was the person the police interacted with that they have COVID or something along those lines, then you can use the funds to reimburse wages for those activities. Or you can use it for like donations that the ambulance service can like PPE or whatever else they can do.
Okay.
Don't, okay, I don't know this, but don't they have to kind of act that it might be a COVID person when the ENT goes to get people? Or don't they do that anymore?
That's, yeah, I guess I don't know the answer to that.
Is there a protocol, Jason?
I don't know, that's what I was wondering because I mean, normally they have to document that they were COVID positive, you know? So I came up with that myself, but I would think it has to be some sort of documentation.
I mean, I think what you says, if you have a different protocol you follow now than you did before because the COVIDers are the same.
It's, it's the same thing.
It's the same answer as the COVID protocol.
Right.
Okay.
So it follows a universal precautions.
Right.
That we assume that everybody's infected until we know otherwise.
Okay.
And using PPEs.
Yeah, for a while we only sent two people in, you know? And then sometimes we even had the people come outside if they were able. But it's, it's relaxed a lot more, but we're still, yeah, same guidelines.
And that may change with the Delta variant.
Right, got me all on that again.
Those are all good questions. I mean, we do, I believe we have through 2023 or 2024 to spend the funds. So it's not like CARES Act where they give you four months and you have to spend, you know, a hundred fifty thousand dollars or whatever you got, try to figure out, pull it together. So you do have time to have a period these out and hopefully the treasury comes out with a little more guidance of how it can be used for like infrastructure projects, you know? I know we have the Regional Score One Freedom Plan. I don't know if money can be tapped into use from that. Those are all questions that I think need to be and asked and clarified by the treasury.
Says here in the report, the city needs to submit an acceptance letter to the state and pass a resolution. Did we do that? I don't think we've done that yet.
Hey, I don't see pass a resolution. I know in Pine Island, we did pass a resolution accepting the funds. I know Lori had submitted information to the state to get the funds. I don't remember if I needed to pass a resolution, but you certainly can just say that the acceptance.
Maybe we should have him give us the right wording and resolution to share the next meeting.
I can do that.
Well, maybe they already got their money.
They did, how much did they get?
I don't know, you didn't, I didn't hear that.
Oh, okay.
I just know that they got it.
Oh, okay.
Probably around about a thousand dollars per capita. So whatever their population is, five thousand, somewhere around there. So I can look into that. I guess the last thing that I really wanted to ask for, because I was just kind of pulling things together from what Donna had been working on. But one thing that we like to do in Seda Communities is ask you, what do you want us to be working on? We kind of have a work plan together. There's very specific projects that the city would like to accomplish. Just a little guidance there. That way I'm not just bouncing back and forth for random things. I want to make sure whatever I'm doing is beneficial to the community and making sure that's matching what your goals for growing the community is.
Would, would the signs for the city, would, would that qualify? You know, the four, four new signs, Good You.
Something to work on, I mean, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was wondering too, if we're going to move on that and get that going.
So what did you say, or what ones were you talking about?
To the entrance of the town.
Okay.
You said four of them, right?
He's correct.
And there was an individual who said he would donate to getting it done. So Lori has that name or could get it to you or. So we want to, I don't say want to mention in public at this time, but you know, so.
Or, you know, some locals want to be involved in that too as far as, you know, design and that type of thing.
Good thing to bring up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Are we still looking to move forward on Cranston Heights and the nature exploration park? You talked about that.
Yes, I put that in there. I, there's some ideas that you could run with with that. That could be maybe a little more cost effective for a park. I mean, you have all those trees up there that would have to come down for liability purposes to save the soda. You could repurpose those trees and you could make like different sized logs for kids to jump on and things like that. There's actually a park in Pine Island where they had old tractor tires that was donated to people. They donated to the city because farmers had to get rid of them. And they impaired them to the ground. And they compared them at different heights that kids could go back and forth on. And they, I think we're, the idea is just kids are just looking to climb and jump off, so. So trying to find cost effective ways to do that would be good. So I mean, if you're looking at new park equipment, you're pocketing about thirty, forty thousand dollars. It gets really expensive really quick.
Yeah.
Well, we've enough to, if that's the project that you want me to work on, I can certainly do that and start looking at different grants to make it happen, but I think that's your decision.
Any consensus on that at all?
I guess I really haven't, we've done a lot of thought on it, so.
It would, it would be nice to have something different in, in the town. I, I mean, I don't know that it's, it's necessary, but it would be nice to have something different if we didn't have to put a lot of money in. I mean, that's the other part of it, if we can get some grants for that. I mean, taking down trees, that's kind of inexpensive.
Yeah.
And then, and then somebody's got to know how to make them into stuff. If it's benches or whatever.
Well, I mean, you're really just going to just take the stump of log and just cut it to different sizes. So whoever's moving the trees could do that and figure out they have to just bury it in the ground so they don't move anywhere. That'd be kind of the idea there.
Okay. Okay, that's easy.
That'd be good to hear some ideas.
Yeah, certainly some ideas on it, see what other. Are there anybody close to us that has a nature park that we could go look at and?
I believe Red Wing has one. So I'll have to do some more research and go visit and just kind of see how theirs line up. Although I just, I did some searching on Google and possibly get my ideas. I mean, there was one that also said they basically cut into a hill to make like almost a little flat area into the hill and then build the laws up along the hill as kind of a retaining wall. And then kids could jump up on the laws and they put like a sand pit in the middle. And that was one part of the park. So just little things like that, especially in a fancy nice park where it's already really hilly. Something like that might make a lot of sense to do there.
So is Red Wing, is that new? Is that quite new?
If, I've heard that they have it. I don't, I haven't actually looked at it, but if they do, it's very good. Yeah, these, these nature parks, they're starting to become more popular, but they're not in a lot of places.
I had a thought too of something maybe the city would want to do at some point in time. Have an area for a community garden where people could put in a garden spot. And I don't know how you plan something like that. I don't know what kind of areas we have for that. But I know twenty years ago when I moved to town, I didn't really have a place for a garden and I was looking around for a place and really couldn't find anything. And I would think that the different, like the Hispanics and that kind of thing that we have here might want to have a space if they could, you know, to garden and new people coming to town. So I don't know how you put something like that together, so maybe that's something we can look into and.
Yeah, I can do some research there. I know several city communities have that. I know Rochester has one. I don't have one, so I can do some more research there to figure out how it came together, who owned the land. Was the city owned land? Was somebody donate part of their land to make it happen? I think in Rochester, you have to, you can rent certain areas and then you can plant yourself there. So there's some options. Yeah, I can do some more research on that.
Okay. Kind of like that idea, you know?
I guess it would be helpful if, if you maybe could come back and give us some ideas just to see what's out there and then possibly what is available as far as if it's grant warranted, what we could look at for that. And then just kind of prioritize and see, you know, what. We don't want to get involved in too many projects too quick, but we want to prioritize them and really use your time efficiently and then have a successful end product. So.
Yeah, absolutely. That's certainly what I'd like to do is to be able to start asking people work plans. Everyone has three or four ideas, you know, that they want, which is great. And then just kind of work your way down what's the most important and kind of go from there. Anyone else have any ideas? Well, I think I have a few things to run up here. I can offer some different things and go over there.
And you may get a lot of ideas after meeting itself too from other communities and.
Yeah, absolutely.
Especially things that are successful in smaller communities like ourselves. You know, what, what have people done that have been pretty successful? That would be helpful.
If there's nothing else, that can go as through the history.
Thank you.
They have an motion to adjourn the EDA meeting?
I'll make the motion to adjourn the EDA meeting.
Hold on a second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye, both. EDA meeting is adjourned. We'll go into the Good You Council meeting and we'll stand for the flag allegiance.
Flag of allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we need a motion to approve the agenda. Is there any additions or?
Do you want to add me in there?
I'm not supposed to do. I'm not supposed to do, where do, uh, new business?
Yeah, that's the first thing on them, new business?
I think so.
Okay, so, just say Steve?
Steve Paul.
Yep, okay. Do we need a motion for that or anything? Uh, do you want to do that, then we'll prove the.
They'll prove the amended agenda.
Amended agenda, yeah. All right, with that, we have a motion to approve the amended agenda.
I so move.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor? Aye, aye. Opposed? All right, we have an approved agenda. Uh, we need to approve the minutes from the July fourteenth meeting, do you have a motion for that?
No motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes for the July fourteenth meeting, all those in favor? Aye, aye. Opposed? That's approved, old business.
Um, a couple of things here, as I mentioned, we're gonna probably vote on that people property on, next week. So I don't know if this, you have stuff in there or not, but you're gonna have to kind of work with Carolyn and.
We took the big stuff off.
Oh, you did, oh, you did, okay.
And the lines were, I think the lines had stuff in there, I think they took those off last night.
Yeah, so anyway, so that's, and, um, the second thing is that, um, uh, they're, they're gonna have an, an open house or a groundbreaking on Wednesday, Wednesday, August fourth. And they, they asked us, whoever can make it, of course, they'd like to be there. The event starts at four thirty and ends about six. The mayor will be making some remarks about around four forty-five, five o'clock, he's gonna have some prepared remarks to, to say on behalf of the city and the people that have worked on the project. There will be some late, late refreshments that will be available. So they asked us to announce that and I did that. Other thing that they asked, if, if possible, we'd like to, it's gonna be in the egg partners', um, uh, lot and they'd like it. If we could get, somebody could take this, um, podium down there, it's just everybody can bring it down there, I'll, I'll bring it back a, after the event is done, if that's okay with everybody else. Okay?
That, that's all we all have in that department, that's it, all right. And apparently, uh, new business, we have Steve.
Yes, I am, uh, we're in need of a new. We're in need of a new drag chain at the sewer plant, and my primary clarifier, it drags solids to a pit, is what it does. You know, one we have is still working, but it's in very good shape, and this new one does take ten weeks to get. It was pretty, it was tough to find, it was originally made by Moline, but they sold out, and the new company just continued this line, but they were able to find some for me. So we hope we get that ordered tomorrow, and then as soon as we get that, we'll have to replace that because it's a very bad component to the treatment plant.
What if we were to need another one, I don't know how long before we get the, the sewer, uh, the next thing ready, um?
This one will be, this, this will last.
Oh, well, we're good.
This is our, we could have switched to a plastic chain, but just with our timeframe we're looking at, you know, I said, more than within five years, we have this sanitary district figured out.
Okay, district, yeah.
Where, he said I should have twenty, I should be like twenty years out with this chain.
Oh.
Where it's more, something else fails, that, that's different.
Okay, all right, good, thanks, Steve.
Yeah, so that's, and it's, the, the wire shoes and the nylon are just different components to this, to this. There's, it's boards that just drag across the floor, and it's just, the nylon, they're just wire shoes, so we don't get the boards down, just wear those shoes down.
Is this something we're working on, the city will do, or you guys are doing it, or is it?
We'll do it.
Oh, okay, so that's.
Yeah, it's more, they, they give me the chain and then with the pump tank down.
Sure.
Where they, they've done it in the past, John has, and Holly had. So that was, that was earlier this month, and then this week we had difficulties with our lift station at the pool, which services the pool, and then one house, allergies house there, where I have tech come up today where our pump still works, but we can't get the pump out because of the components that hold the pump in are rusted. So our most feasible option is to replace the lift station itself, it's a twenty-four inch diameter plate, that's ten feet, and put a new pump in there. Worst case, they said we should really get it in in a day, we will line up an excavator, they'll come with new stuff. I, this all happened today when they got here to look at it, I had no idea on cost.
Ouch, yeah. Oh, man.
Yeah, well, they would just service the pool, but since it's, I mean, it's full of end households, where we just kind of, we've checked it three times a day. And so far it's been working, but, for all I know.
So, so you're just replacing what is in there, is that, is that what it would be?
Yeah, right now it's a steel twenty-four inch diameter plate, you can put in some twenty-four inch, twenty-four class, which should last longer.
When will they be here, you think, to do that?
If, potentially they could probably do it next week, not bad. Because he said they have, they have those in stock, it's more if they have all the electrical components down there. But he thought they had, who's gonna check, and then I'm gonna talk to the boss tomorrow or Friday.
Have any idea of roughly how much?
No.
No?
No, and he, I'm hoping when I talk to Cory the boss tomorrow or Friday, he can give me something, so I can let you guys know on that. And I, as soon as I find something, I will definitely email you guys, let you know. Yes, Kerry?
I was wondering, that's a, that's a grinder plugged out there, isn't it, Steve?
Yep.
Yeah, because I remember putting it in, but, uh, so did you get a price on it, new one?
Not yet, they're gonna work on it, it's on the way today, and the boss will hope that he's gonna try to get over here tomorrow or Friday and go over more and give me partner numbers.
So it's not just plugged?
No, pump is still pumping, but it keeps tripping off the breakers, and when we started testing, we think there's some moisture inside the motor on the pump.
Okay, thanks.
Yep. That's where we're at on that, we kind of see that, we'll be just, I will let you guys know as soon as I know something. So that we can do, I'm good.
So do we have to make a motion on this?
The, oh, I guess I don't, you gotta, you gotta do it.
Right.
I think it's more information.
So we can make this motion.
Yeah, it's more information.
I'll just kind of let you know what's going on.
Okay, yeah.
It's gotta be done, it has to be done, it's.
And if anyone wants to help put the chain in, I can let it, I can make you a call.
Might be good.
Do you supply boots?
Boots. I have boots and bras, what else?
Gloves to the shoulders.
No other new business. So then, we, we jump to mayor concerns, um, and one thing I'll just talk about very quickly, as I, like I said, I attended, is there, Zambroda Ambulance Association last night, their full board meeting, um, the, we pay a per capita to them for that service. The fee for the per capita is gonna stay the same, it's gonna be based off the new census numbers that we get in September, I guess. So it'll cost us a little more for the additional number of households in town, that kind of thing, but we're not raising the per capita fee. They did ask about the new round of federal money and whether or not we could consider, and that's just something to think about, uh, helping them out with that when we do get it. There are forty-four calls ahead of last year, um, there have been times when all the trucks have been out. They got a new IRB, what do they call it, IRB vehicle, that is just a additional smaller vehicle, it's not a ambulance. They can go to a call with another, say if they need another tech, or, uh, uh, if the medical director needs to get out there for some reason or something like that. And that's, that's when they'll take that, and, and so, uh, that, they said that's coming real handy, they're really glad they were able to get it, the old one's full of rust and not doing well. So, um, financially, other than that, the board, right now they're keeping up, and they said the monies that, uh, were provided by the cities and townships from the last federal, um, uh, grants, uh, really helped out, and that's a lot of the reason why, uh, they're staying, you know, head above water with all that. Still doing really good with employees, um, a lot of ambulance associations are having problems with employees. They have twenty-five people on staff, six full-time people, um, and people who want to be part of the staff. So, uh, that's, you know, that's pretty good to hear in a current climate, I guess, you know, of not being able to get people, but, so, um, yeah. And that's, I got a, just a quick update, I got some budget numbers, if anybody ever wants to look at them, or, you know, the minutes from the meeting, that kind of thing, so, just, and then, I was gonna bring up this as just another idea that we could think about, in the future, maybe we wanna try to set, uh, like a time limit on visitors speaking. We used to do this on the school board, they had five minutes to present, a visitor who just comes in and wants to present something. And then they had to fill out a card and give it to the board first, so that we knew what it was gonna be about. Yeah, just an idea, maybe organizing better our meetings and, and, uh, not getting into a situation where somebody is gonna try to present for an hour, you know, but then the, that would be set in policy already, so we would know, yeah.
I think it's pretty common, most places do kind of have a, uh, uh, kind of a limit, so that everybody has a fair chance, you know.
Yeah, and we don't go to.
Maybe we can, maybe we can come back with some kind of proposed policy, um, maybe Kerry or I or Lori can say, what are the communities doing? I don't know what the school does, it doesn't, uh, what, what do they do up at the school?
Well, they used to, yeah, uh, they would, uh, you had to fill out a card, you could turn it in, you, and everybody in the board would get a, get one of these cards that said what they were gonna speak on, and, uh, we could deny it if we wanted to too.
Yeah.
And, uh, uh, the person presenting, um, someone would be responsible to make sure they kind of stayed close to that time limit. And yeah, there was a timeline, you had five minutes to do your presentation, so, uh, and like Richard saying there, it's, makes it fair for everybody and it, then it keeps it a little bit under control for us as far as, you know, not going all night on a meeting or something if somebody gets extended, extensive.
Can I say something there?
Yeah, absolutely.
Uh, yeah, Lori, Lori and I have been looking at that already, because I was gonna bring it up to the council. I think we gotta adopt that policy, five minutes, or if we could deny it, we will. But I think five minutes is enough for anybody, and so it doesn't go overboard, and I think you should do it tonight, yeah.
Um, question. Okay, you got somebody coming in and they're talking about the, um, the new, new buildings that are going up here in, in town. I mean, is that fair to give them five minutes?
I, I think, if I can say some, I, I think what, I think what, what they're talking about, five, what, what, most, we don't have this in good, you know, maybe you wanna go this route too, but most times, not most, a lot of communities will have a five, or a, a public comment period. So if somebody wants to talk to something about something that's not on the agenda, so, and, and generally speaking, the mayor decides what's on the agenda, okay? So then, um, I don't know if that's the direction you're going, Kerry, or not, you'll have to, I don't know, but, um.
Yeah, yeah, it is, if we had somebody that said we were gonna have somebody come in and speak about the building, we put them on agenda, that, that would be different. Or if somebody just coming in with a complaint or something, or wants to talk about certain things, that's five minutes.
So, and, so we wanna have like a public comment period, as I, I'm not telling, uh, some kind of public comment period, maybe we would just, we would just put that as a line item on our meeting, a public comment period, and, and, um, uh, limit it to five minutes, and I don't know if you wanna fill out a card or not, I don't know. How formally you wanna get them that, that's up to you guys, that's up to your.
If we wanna pass something tonight, we could just, I think we could just pass and say we wanna start adding this to the agenda and we'll let, like you said, uh, Richard and Lori and the mayor work on putting together the whole, you know, the policy and, and, uh, then we can approve that.
And then we also, Kerry, it also mentioned to me, I'm kind, about this complaint part, that we have had a complaint process. If you have a complaint about an employee or a policy, whoever, that way you know what you're gonna talk about, so we have them fill out the complaint form, so then we can try to, try to solve it, we're all just in solving problems and working together, rather than having, you know, so, uh, the, uh, maybe, maybe if you wanna make the motion, it'd be a five-minute policy and then the details be worked out later, on a pub, but would you want a, a public comment period? We don't have, is that what you, what do you guys want, I guess?
It makes sense.
Yeah, I think it makes sense to have the public comments section and then have them adhere to that five minutes.
Whatever, whatever the rules are, yeah.
Right.
I'm just, some.
So then they would know where they fall in the agenda.
Yeah.
Now is the time for public comments, if anybody has them, you have five minutes.
Now you know, like you say.
That's what most people do at the beginning of the, of a meeting, and it's, and it's not, no, no, I wanna make myself clear. This is, this is not applicable to a public hearing. Some things we do with the city require, like when we do tax increment or projects, uh, have a public hearing. That's completely separate from anything we would, so if we have a public hearing, you know, we give a notice and it's published and et cetera. They have a right to come and, you know, talk whenever they want, so, and I, I mean, nobody, I mean, in my experience here for a long time, council's been pretty liberal, pretty, you know, people got a issue we usually try to work it out, um, but so just kind of maybe putting in writing what we're a little bit been doing anyway. Except for with the time limit.
And I don't think that means that somebody's hearing us talk about a subject and raises their hand and we can't say, oh, you know, go ahead, you know, that kind of thing.
Oh, no, yeah, the, the, usually like Redwick, what they do, they, these, these are things that are not on the agenda. And then, then, then the mayor can always recognize anybody from the, which we've pretty much done anyway.
Right, right.
So.
Motion maybe toward at least initiating a public comment period or time, I intended, a five-minute limit?
I think that was logical, you know?
The motion, the motion.
Logical.
Yeah, that, that, that's, okay.
Motion, because it's.
Okay, yeah, yeah, okay.
I'll second that.
We have a, a motion and a second for a, uh, public comment period on our agendas, uh, that will be about five minutes and allow the mayor and, and attorney and city clerk to put together the policy that we can maybe just approve then at another meeting, yeah. So, uh, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. And opposed? Motion passed. That's all I have. We have council concerns?
I was just wondering if the, um, um, of course Lori has to do everything. Lori got the letters out, you know, to the people that had needed to do cleanup in their yards and stuff.
I don't know that, we did, um, Kerry and I again talked about, I think yesterday or today, about, um, uh, front yard parking, that really has to be like, the, the, the front yard stuff, which tends to be more and more of the stuff is, I don't know if she did, we did. Kerry asked me to talk to the police about going up and talking to some of the people that had items parked in their front yards. Um, and, you know, tell them to give them a warning, give them some time, so, um, but I don't know if she did, if she, I can follow up with her and see if she did that, Patrice, to make sure that we get kind of a list and, not a threatening thing to say, we have that, yeah. I'll follow up.
I think there might have been like three or four.
Okay, I'll, I'll follow up with her on that, okay.
Anything else? Nope. There's no other council concerns, it'll move to a motion to pay the bills?
I so move.
We have a second?
We have to pay them anyway.
For the few. I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to pay the bills. Any discussion? The one thing I would just say quickly is our public fund is remaining about the same as it's been for quite a while, really. The cash on hand kinda situation and what that is, so.
I, I think that's a true statement and actually it's a little bit above what we've been. We've been, we will get the other payment from the depot now, it's coming restrictions on that, so that's gonna put us in a little better position, you know, uh, going into next year for maybe some projects that we need to do.
Okay, so, you know, I just think that's always good to see that, you know, that those reserve funds are there and available and, and staying healthy, so.
Absolutely.
So, any other comments? Not, we'll take a motion to approve the, pay the bills?
I think we're already good.
Oh, sure.
Patrice and Jason.
Oh, we have the motions, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and opposed. Super. Now we have to move to a closed meeting. We need a motion for that, I expect.
Yeah, we do.
Yeah, and a motion to move to a closed meeting.
I'll make the motion, close, go to closed meeting.